Regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, again Wednesday, August the 8th. It is 9:00 a.m. Calling the meeting to order. Would you folks mind rising for the invocation? Remain standing for the pledge of the U.S. and Texas flag. I've asked Mr. Williamson if he would to lead the invocation. Gary?
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity together this morning, for the opportunity also to gear the management of Grimes County. Guide our commissioners in their decisions that help them make the right decisions that are best for the people of our county. Also, Lord, please look after our first responders and protect them as they go out there protecting us. And in one final item, Lord, look after our armed forces personnel. If it were not for them, we would not even be able to hold this meeting today. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be sure to please? Go to the second agenda item for public comments. We look forward to hearing from citizens of Grimes County. Ask that you share your thoughts, your concerns with us. We would ask that you limit any comments that you have to two minutes. Yes, ma'am. Would you come to the podium and identify yourself, please?
I am Susan Patrick, Chairman of the Grimes County Republican Party. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to report to you that the Republican Party has been busy doing something that we were both delighted and sad to do, and that is to replace the name of Gary Husfeld on the ballot. He, when he left this world, he was on the Republican primary ballot as a candidate. He was the only one, and it was too late to withdraw his name. And so he was duly elected, and so then we had the task of determining what we do in that situation. And what we learned is that after everything is certified and canvassed and all of that, then there's a certain timing involved. But then the precinct, that precinct, Commissioner Precinct Four Executive, Republican Executive Committee would meet, which is three precinct chairs, they're elected, and would nominate and select someone to replace the name on the ballot. That is the procedure. And so that group met. I was there to facilitate and give them the form. It was a very important role to give them the form. And so we met on July 26th. Two of the three precinct chairs were in attendance, one could not attend, and it was a very short, very unanimous decision to replace the name of Gary Husfeld with Philip Cox. And so he is officially on our ballot, and we were very excited because we believe he's doing a great job for our county. And so I just wanted you to know that that's done. This name has, the form, the very important form, has been given to the Elections Administrator, the Secretary of State in the Republican Party. It's done. It's a done deal. Just wanted y'all to know that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Jay Lafferty, Veteran Service Officer for Grimes County. Couple of things I wanted to mention this morning that are coming up. One of them I think is very important pursuant to an email that the judge got forwarded to me from the Texas Vet Center. There will be a PTSD trauma seminar this Saturday at the VFW Post in Navasota. This is an informational meeting. It's for not only veterans who might have PTSD, but their families and people in the community that feel interested in this, either having friends or business contacts with people that might have PTSD. It's Saturday from 4:00 to 6:00. There's no charge, and there's no pre-signup. Anyone can go. And I want to thank the Examiner and KWBC because they've been very good about publicizing this for us along with other veteran information, and we really appreciate their help. Mr. Carl Dryop, who many of you know, is the Post Commander, and he and I have both just really enjoyed our relationships with the advertising media in this county. Another item that has come up is a group called Meals for Vets. Under federal law, any meals program like Meals on Wheels that is paid for partially with federal dollars is only for people 60 and over. There are vets in this world that are not 60 years old but are having difficulty getting a good meal every day. This group addresses that, and you find one who you think is eligible, and then you forward their name onto the group, and they contact them and go through their paperwork to make sure they're eligible as far as financial and veterans' lives and all that. We've already had one gentleman recommended by the VFW, and he's been recommended to this group. I have not heard of a outcome since it deals with finances. I try to stay out of it. It's none of my business. That's between them, but the program is, appears to be working on our first gentleman. We have high hopes for that for veterans to have a couple getting meals. One other thing I'd like to mention, this is actually an agrilife event, but it's a business workshop for veterans who are interested in agriculture, whether they're already involved in it or whether they want to become involved in it, they just want to get better at it or learn how to do it financially, the business end of it. And this is August the 24th. It's over at G. Roly- G. Roly-White Vista Center. You can get the details from the Agrilife Extension's web service, but I wanted to mention it because it is something primarily for veterans. And that's what I have for this morning. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Judge. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to bring an issue up to the question.
Could I get you to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. My name is Annabeth Neeson. I live in Shiro. I have no official position. An issue that has come to my attention, I know the Commissioners Court has voted on getting a Grimes County animal shelter. When you live out in the country, for those of you that live out in the country, some people think, oh, if I let my animal out, I don't want any more near their house, they'll take care of it. And for the most part, we do. I had a cat show up, a half-grown kitten, back the day before Harvey, and it's like, okay, I'll feed you. But of course, this spring, she presented me with four kittens. So I now have not one cat more, extra cat to feed, but five, who in short term will be able to reproduce also. So I started calling the vets to see what it would cost me to get mama spay and then the kittens when they're older. At 150 bucks a pop? I can't afford $750 for taking care of a kitten factory starting to establish itself in my home. I'll feed them. I can afford to feed them. I can't afford to feed what they reproduce. And if the Commissioners could somehow address a way of getting low-cost, I'm not saying free, but at least low-cost spay and neuter services. I did find a place down in spring, because some tomcats were starting to come around. I knew if I didn't do something shortly, I'd have another litter this fall. That is called Texas Litter Control, who will spay one stray cat per person. I would say with spay mom. So she's taking care of it. But I just got to think about, I know I've got a neighbor in Shiro. She fed a stray cat. She now has nearly 20 or better stray cats around her house because she could not, she didn't find this, and she cannot, she can't afford $100 for a cat, much less more. It's an issue for those of us, especially in the rural areas. We have no access to reasonable spay and neuter services.
Thank you very much for your comment. Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I'd like to make an announcement. On that week, August 14th, we are hosting a Back to School Health and Safety Day, Texas and M. Agrilife Extension, Grimes County, along with Strengthening Families, Purview, N. M. University, and our STAR Program. It's August 14th from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. It is at the Grimes County Fairgrounds, and it is a way of providing families back-to-school supply, health, and safety information. And we look forward to helping our citizens out with their families during this time. So just a little announcement to ask you to spread the word that last year we serviced over 300 and something families and we, or children, I put it like that, children. And this year, we hope to at least service the same amount.
And the 14th is a Tuesday? Are they giving away backpacks?
Yes.
Maybe we could put a kitten in each of the backpacks? Are there any other public comments? Thank you, Ms. Walker, Commissioner. No additional public comments. Thank you all for your input. Well, I'm now going to move to Consent Agenda Items Number Three. Consider and Take Action to Approve Payroll, Consent Agenda Item Number Four. Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. Consent Agenda Item Number Five. Consider and Take Action to Approve Budget Amendments and/or Line Item Transfers. And Consent Agenda Item Number Six. Approved Minutes of Previous Commissioners Court's Special Meeting on July 3rd, 2018, 9:00 a.m. Budget Workshop Meeting on July 5th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. Special Meeting on July 6th, 2018, 11:00 a.m. Budget Workshop Meeting on July 9th, 2018, 9:00 a.m. Public Hearing on July 11th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. Public Hearing on July 11th, 2018, at 8:45 a.m. Regular Meeting on July 11th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. And Special Meeting on July 18th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. And those are attached. Commissioners, we've had time, or we've had them before us, but are there questions?
I did, Judge.
Okay.
On the budget workshop for the 5th day of July, were we adjourned and?
Reced.
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 Reced, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find it. Were we recessed? And that date was the 9th of July, I'm sorry. It said we adjourned at 4:34 p.m., and if I remember correctly, it was about 7:30.
Yeah, 7:30. Okay. Are you bucking for overtime pay, Commissioner?
No, I just want to make the correction to the minutes.
I thought I requested that at the end of that session.
You may have, but you're correct. So, Sharif, you'd make the change to that because it was, what'd you say, 7:34?
It was about 7:34.
Yeah, 7:34 when we adjourned, but we did finish our business that day.
Yes.
That was p.m. Thank you. Are there any other modifications, changes, or questions regarding the consent agenda items before you?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
There's a motion before the court to approve Consent Agenda Items Number 3, 4, 5, and 6 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dubianski. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Do you make that with the correction?
That is, okay.
Yeah, with the correction, two minutes.
That was noted, sure. Thank you. Number seven, emergent, Agenda Item Number Seven, Emergent Amendment Subdivision Coordinator, David Lilly, consider and take action, necessary action to approve the replat of West Magnolia Forest, Section 23, Block 8, that divides Lot 10, 5.069 acres into two lots to be re-designated as Lot 10A for 2.5345 acres and Lot B for 2.53, 2.5345 acres. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, again, as we discussed during the public hearing, this is a replat request from the landowner. They currently own Lot 10, and they wish to divide it into two equal parts so that they can sell those lots and allow them to be developed. The reason it's coming before you is because this West Magnolia Forest, Section 23, was planted, and it's changing that plat, so it requires a replat. There's no problems with either access. Both lots will directly adjourn on the Clark Road, and they're of sufficient size that I don't see any issues with any future development on those lots.
Commissioner Dubianski, that, those properties are in your precinct?
Yes, yes. If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the replat of West Magnolia Forest, Section 23, Block 8, that divides Lot 10, 5.069 acres into two lots to be re-designated as Lot 10A, 2.5345 acres, and Lot 10B, 2.5345 acres.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Seven by Commissioner Dubianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eight, Mr. Lilly, review and take action to release the road construction bond for Horseshoe Acres and accept the maintenance bond in the amount of $333,840 and approve placement of horseshoe bin into a one-year maintenance period.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, Horseshoe Acres is the small development that was recently built out. I believe that's, Harry, what road is that on? That's 220.
220.
220. And the developer, or actually the builder, Jim Hassel, the developer, had him build a concrete road, and we monitored it throughout the construction process, and also they submitted the test as required, and all tests exceeded the county requirement for a concrete road. So I am confident that the road is ready to go into the maintenance period. Mr. Hassel has provided me with the maintenance bond. I have that secured, and I recommend that you consider lifting the construction bond.
And the road being concrete, we wouldn't really expect to have any maintenance for that other than maybe ditching along the way, sir? Any questions for Mr. Lilly on that?
I have none.
Motion?
I believe that we release a road construction bond on Horseshoe Acres and accept the maintenance bond in the amount of $333,840 and approve the placement of horseshoe bin into that one-year maintenance period.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Dubianski. There's a second by Commissioner Cox. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine, Consider Approval to Issue Request for Proposals and Qualifications for Services Related to CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds Administered by the General Land Office. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, I must apologize. The reason this is coming up again, we had it on the agenda for the 18th of July, as you remember, and I had seen what I thought was an entry in the previous set of Commissioners' Court Minutes where this had already been approved, but subsequent to that, we could not actually locate that. I don't know where that went, but be it as it may, we did a thorough search, could not find it, and it became obvious that we needed to readdress this so that we could get this moving. I have been working with the Auditor's Office to develop the RFP, but they can't release it until we get authorization to do so.
I probably asked this question back in July. Do you know what the CDBG stands for?
Yes, Community Disaster Block Program.
Thank you.
Also, just as an addendum, I noticed an email that I got an info copy of that relates to this that you would receive, Judge, and it addressed the requirement for low to moderate income that we have to achieve at least 70% for any projects for these funds. Came from the Governor's Office. They're recommending that you consider requesting a waiver for that, and that, if we get that waiver, that would definitely help us on obtaining these funds for the projects we need to.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make the motion that we issue requests for proposal and qualification for services related to the CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds as administered by the General Land Office.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Walker. There's a second by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Ms. Pope, are you okay?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda Item Number 10, Consider and Review Holiday Time Policy for Part-Time Employees.
Judge and Commissioners, I received a phone call from Todd Green, the Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Department, to have holiday time for court-time employees clarified on the hours. And so we're going to leave it to the Commissioners Court to decide. Now, our policy does say that we do, if a part-time employee is to work on a holiday, then they are to be paid, so. Do we pay them four hours? Do we pay them eight hours? Go ahead.
I copied that yesterday, but I don't know where I placed it, so I thought it had, yes, ma'am, a little bit more information on it.
Now, the policy that we had back in 2002, part-time employees were not paid. And then in 2000, and I think that was revised in 2007, it was clarified that part-time employees should get, if they, you know, holiday time.
It says only if the part-time employees shall be eligible for benefit only if the employee is regularly scheduled to work on the holiday.
Right. So Todd, was it that you wanted to clarify how many hours they receive, or?
Well, the current situation is a lot of part-time employees in the county have been told that they don't qualify for holiday time at all. And so once you go back and look into the policy, it says they do qualify for holiday time. They were running the situation that the Sheriff's Office is really not sure what to do, so we're giving, we're going to give one part-time employee maximum benefits that a full-time employee does, but then another employee, well, they only work maybe five or six days usually a week, so we're going to give them only six hours for holiday. But, you know, fair, I mean, so why are we running different standards? I mean, it needs to be equal and fair to everybody, and I would think that it needs to be laid out exactly what part-time employees are going to get as far as the holiday time. Because I know on the full-time employees, it doesn't matter if you work a 12, 10, or eight-hour shift, you're given an allotment sum because we want to do this because one employee goes, well, they're getting 12 hours, I should get 12 hours on a holiday time. So y'all standardize, or the court has standardized in the past, okay, all employees are getting this much. So I would think we would have a similar system set up for part-time instead of this government, because I have an employee that works five days a week, but only six, six hours a day, and they get 30 hours a week, but then there could be another employee that only works 24 hours a week, but they work eight hours for three days, and they're being offered more holiday time versus the other employee. So I just think that standard needs to be actually outlined, so everybody's on the same page knowing exactly what these employees get.
Is this only when they actually work that day that they get the benefit? Is that what we're talking about?
I mean, it just says that their scheduling, their normal schedule. My employee's scheduled Monday through Friday.
But don't work.
In the holiday calls that week, you know? That pretty much covered it.
All total, we have 18 part-time employees, and only seven of them are receiving holiday time.
So we have employees that haven't been receiving holiday time for years, while others have at all.
Give me an example of a part-time employee that does get paid and an example of a, of a part-time employee that doesn't get paid.
I know I have an employee that has not been getting paid for holiday time.
It also spoke to in here, it says, "Grimes County Sheriff's Office Personnel Shall Refer to That Department's Policy Regarding Holiday Time." So what is your policy?
We're always going, part-time people don't get holiday time, so.
Do you have a policy in place?
Before we go by the county on holiday time.
And 2007 will be the latest revision to the policy, Lucy?
Yes.
Judge, I think we need to define what, how many hours a holiday is.
Well, normally, a holiday is eight hours. That's the equivalent.
We have 15 holidays, and if you divide that, or times eight is 120 hours. That's what's always been approved for holidays.
But in this particular scenario, if you have a part-time employee that works five hours a day, do they get eight hours of holiday time, or do they get five hours?
That's where I need clarification.
Well, same thing goes for 40 offices that work 10-hours, 10-hour days.
I have a different employee, and they work eight hours this day, work four hours this day.
But if their normal schedule calls them to work five hours a day or six hours a day, I would think it's appropriate. That's how much holiday pay they would receive is the equivalent to their normal daily schedule, not eight hours just because it's a holiday. That doesn't sound reasonable. Yes, sir.
Well, I have a part-time employee too, and it's kind of unique, because this all kind of started with my employee and Todd's in the Sheriff's Office. There, like, my employee has no set hours. It kind of varies with the court, so some days he might work eight hours, some days he might, he might work four hours. I think a reasonable deal for the courts maybe to look at is there's 120 hours that full-time gets, do a portion of the 120 and just give it to part-time. It goes in their account, they use it as they see fit. So whether y'all give part-timers 90 hours or 100 hours, or whatever y'all see fit, it goes in the account, and any part-timer's eligible for that. I mean, if you get into, well, I'm being honest and being a good supervisor for the county, if I don't need my guy in court, I send him home, I'm only putting 30, 4 hours on his time sheet. If I want to say, well, oh, I want to get you eight hours, I'm going to let you milk the clock so you can get eight hours, well, then that's not fair for the county. Same thing with Todd and their employee. He only works five and a half hours a day. Yes, they can make him work, you know, eight hours a day is beneficial. I mean, they need that position, so we're trying to look out for the county. I think the most fair way is to be, is y'all decide on the hour amounts for part-timers, and it goes into their account, and they use it as they use it.
Let me, let me throw another question. Ms. Lee's in the audience. You have some people that handle solid, direct waste, and it might be that their only scheduled day is Monday, and if they have a holiday on Tuesday, they don't receive any pay, do they, or do they?
No. What's been done in the past is if a holiday lands on a day when they, when their dump site is supposed to, their collection site's supposed to be open, we always, because they are part-time, and if they don't work, they don't get paid.
Right.
We always give, gave them the option, took a collective poll, and we always gave them the option if they would like to work that, on that day. They would just work the holiday, they'd have their collection site open on that holiday. It's not, I mean, not a major It's not, I mean, not a major holiday like Christmas or Thanksgiving, but, you know, President's Day, uh, Juneteenth, that, that sort of thing. Well, we gave them that option. They could work that holiday if they chose to.
But if they, if they work that holiday, they get their normal.
They get normal, they get normal, and like, um.
But they don't get a, they don't double dip where they get the time worked plus the holiday pay?
No. My employees never got holiday time compensation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lafferty?
As a part-time employee.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'll be here three years in November. And until the last two holidays, I was not paid for holidays. I was told when I went to work, I did not get holiday pay. And then, two holidays ago, I was notified by the Treacher's Office that I did get holiday pay. And so, we don't know what we're supposed to get.
Okay.
And, uh, so right now, and what I was told was that if I was scheduled to work on that holiday, and my standard workday is five hours, I got five hours holiday pay. And that's, that's what, what I've had since I've been here.
Thank you. Well, I think that, uh, we need to probably gather some more information. We could also incorporate TAC into this.
Okay.
See if they have a standard holiday policy for part-time employee. Not that's, that that's what we would accept, but it certainly, we could consider that, because it might be a standard or representative of what other counties do.
I did call TAC. I did talk to Maria Ann, and she said part-time employees do not get holiday time. But if your county, i- if it's in your policy, you do pay them holiday time.
So since we do have it in our policy, then it's up to us to.
Clarify.
Have some understanding, clarify under what circumstances and when.
Right.
Okay.
And, and with that being said, if, if that's what we're going to get clarity on, we also need to get your, um, the Sheriff's Office department policy, your policy, because it references that specifically, so we don't know what your policy is.
Our policy, we, we get all the employees get the standard, it's a hundred and twenty. The only difference is, is, is like, how much would you carry over for salary employees at the end of the year and stuff like that? Ours is basically just different on, when it's taken.
Is it in writing?
Don't work, and on holidays and off holidays, so ours is this kind of thing, and then at the end of the year, salary employees allowed to carry over, non-salary employees get paid out.
Is that.
I do have something on that.
Okay.
Judge, we might want to look at defining what a holiday actually is. How many hours a holiday actually is, as well, whenever we're.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate that. I would say the holiday's eight hours, because that's the way we budget for it, on a pay basis.
Okay, so there's a scenario, if, if, if an office is working four ten hour, four, ten-hour days.
Mm-hmm.
And the holiday falls on a day that they normally work, do they get ten hours or eight hours?
They would, in my opinion, they get eight hours, because they're working four tens to cover their normal five eights.
It's always been that way, they get eight hours.
Originally, what, what, what transpired is, because that discussion was brought up in the past, and then, and had personnel on, well, I've worked forty hours a week, just like that person works forty hours a week, and they're getting more holiday time versus eight-hour employees. So what the county did was, I think they actually only had like twelve or thirteen holidays at the time, and, and gave everybody eight hours, but then they said, okay, for any difference, what we're going to do is we're authorizing up to a hundred and twenty hours of holiday time. To cover all those fluctuations, and then you get a hundred and twenty hours, and your bank, when you start the year off, you get a hundred and twenty hours in your bank. And as those holidays come up, you could use those amount of hours. And so, uh, if you end up using twelve, then your bank is reduced. And then when you run out of a hundred and twenty, you don't get any more time.
So do you come in whenever you run out? Do you come into the office whenever you run out of hours?
Or use vacation or sick or.
Vacation and sick, that's what they've done in the past.
Use vacation time? Well, no.
You only get eight hours for holiday, because.
That's what, my suggestion was, you just put a, a count of so much, so full-time is a hundred and twenty. Obviously, part-time would be reduction of the hundred and twenties, so come up with a number, eighty, ninety, whatever, and that's what goes in the account. Start off the year with eighty hours, whenever you use them up, well, then you're done.
Judge, when, uh, what we've been doing, whenever somebody is, uh, budgeted twenty, forty, I mean, ten, forty hours a year, which is, uh, twenty hours a week, then we budget five dollars an hour, or four dollars an hour for that position for holidays. If they're scheduled to work twenty-nine hours a week, we try to find out what their daily schedule is, and budget however many hours they're going to be normally working per day as the amount budgeted for vacation, or for holidays.
Well, another option is, let's just quit taking holidays. Well, undoubtedly, this is going to require some more review and gathering of information, so I would, um, I'm glad to visit with you, Lucy, and.
Okay.
Review some of the TAC information.
Right.
And that's a good suggestion from Commissioner Walker, that we need to get the Sheriff's Office input, because it's going to affect, since y'all have odd hour schedules and so forth, we'd like to get some input from you folks, or review your policy that you currently have in place.
And I think it spoke also to Rogan Bridge's policy.
And yours, is yours more on the four-ten scenario?
We have a ten issue, I remember.
Okay, but has there been an issue with your crew of getting paid or not getting paid?
It's a headache every time we have a holiday, because they'll get their eight hours, and then some of them will take two hours of vacation, and some of them don't charge any time, and just get, you know, a short paycheck. It's always created issues. But that's, they get eight hours, you know, for holiday time, and they can make up the difference with whatever other time off they have available.
Okay. Or they just don't get paid for those other two hours?
Or that's always an option.
Yeah, okay. Then I would suggest that we, as a court, table this for the time being, to more information and get it. But let's, because we are coming into another holiday, Labor Day, and then we hit Thanksgiving, and we hit Christmas. I'd like to move on this faster than slower and get it resolved. Thanks for bringing it to the attention of the court.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number eleven. Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Todd Green, consider and approve interlocal agreement for managing entity by BV COG for the Brazos Valley Wide Area Communication System, better known as BVWAX, and authorize the county judge's signatory C. number eleven.
This, uh, this agreement is, uh, for the Brazos Valley Wide Area Communication System, or part of, this is the managing entity agreement. This is the agreement between all of the entities that are within this organization to allow the Brazos Valley Council Government manage the cooperation and budget of this particular system. Uh, I know it's been reviewed in the past by the county attorney when we were doing the interlocal agreement. This also was part of that.
Yeah, I looked at the agreement. I don't really have any issues about the terms, and I think it's a ninety-day termination, it's a pretty basic, um, primary, uh, provision, any substance, is at the bottom of page one. Article one, article two, and then it turns over to the next page. It sets forth what the agreement is. But obviously, it's not up to me to approve the number that they're proposing, and I'm not really clear. What, what are they suggesting, Grimes County's portion is going to be, Todd?
It's, it's based on the subscriber count for the radios we have actually on the system.
So where that says sample on page seventeen, that's not what they're saying, the Grimes County portion?
That's the proposed, yes.
That's the what you said?
The proposed.
The proposed?
So.
So it's not a sample, you know, I don't.
Yeah, this is a sample, I mean, that's going to be in the agreement.
At the top, it has eight hundred and five thousand, at the bottom, it has one point one million. Which is the number?
And it also has a proposed three-ten, one-thirty-one.
This is just a sample. This is actually not the full thing.
Because it's going to fluctuate depending on the number of subscribers that we have. More subscribers, less per unit.
The more radios we put on the system, the more costs goes along. But this also is my fault, because the more units, all the entities put on the system actually drive down the cost per year.
Per unit, right.
Is it just for the Sheriff's Department, or do you cover the other radios?
This covers all the radios that are on the system, so it covers, uh, Council's office, DA's office, the Sheriff's office, and, uh, Fire Department's office, all the ones that have this in their system radio.
So the radios we just received, they would go on this system?
Yes.
You know approximately per, but you won't know until everybody's.
Yeah, I believe the last, I, I don't know the exact number I pulled up, but I think it's twenty-three or something radio.
Per month or year?
Yes, per month.
We've been paying right at thirty grand a year for BVWAX.
But that was, I think, the original agreement that y'all signed with them was for a hundred and four radios on the system. I think now we're up to two, two hundred radios on the system.
And that was because we added the volunteer fire department?
Well, that was the minimum count for the agreement that was worked out, twenty-four in the BVWAX, was to pay for a hundred and four. Till, because that was their kind of break-even number, uh, until we get up and running on the system. And as we get up and running, we start putting more radios on the system. So originally, beginning, we tried to start off at a hundred and twenty, and once we started getting all the handhelds, we started getting all the car radios, so, and started actually putting them out in service, then the counts went up, and then, then I think, uh, Mr. Lilly gave the fire, uh, Fire Department transferred them, forty, forty-nine radios.
I think that's right.
Um, forty-nine, and I think there's still some more filtering down to be transferred out to them also.
I think Todd Mission was, I don't know if they have been added, but they want to be added.
We have theirs, uh, basically, I'm holding theirs for them now. Uh, the Fire Fighters Association asks that we hold them until they become, uh, approved members of the Fire Fighters Association, and the Fire Chief with Todd Mission, he concurred with that. And I do have those, you know, they.
But that's a, that's an additional increase.
But the long one has a couple of radios.
So, my question is, if we don't have an accurate dollar amount here, how are we going to budget for it accurately?
They, I can get a budget submitted.
Okay.
They have an accurate budget. That was, they, they get approved by the operating board, and they give us the government board, and then the government board approves it.
But, okay, we just need to have something to, not under budget and not way over budget, or.
And this is for a five-year period?
And you say you can get a, a good figure on, a good number on?
Yeah, we, we have a budget. I mean, the government board has approved the budget, and that's for.
They have.
What's the deadline of this? Is there a deadline on this? Do you want to get it back to?
Yeah, that's what I want to worry, to do that also.
Do we have time to wait?
Yeah, the government board gets one, um, quarterly, so.
BV COG meets today, so I'll be up there. I can ask Wilkerson, or I can ask, uh, what's his name? David, is it Philip, or?
Thomas, Thomas Gilbert.
Tom, is it Thomas?
Heard that, oh, no, you're talking about Tom.
Tom Wilkerson.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about the BVWAX radio guy?
Yeah.
That's Thomas Gilbert.
Thomas Gilbert, okay.
With the head of, the head of BVCOG is Thomas Gilbert.
No, I know that, but I was trying to think of the radio guy. That's Thomas, so. I can visit with him. Okay. So if we have the time available, then would you be in agreement that we table this until we get a, a number, a budget number? Okay. Court in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Agenda item number eleven will be tabled then. Let's go to agenda item number twelve, Mr. Walker. Consider and take action to allow Rogan Bridge to go out for bids for fuel, culverts, tree trimming, contract mowing, asphalt emulsions, contract hauling, Iola, and bridge labor.
Sir. Good morning, everyone. Um, coming up on the end of the budget year, it's time to redo our annual contracts for these services listed. I was asking for permission to go out for bids, uh, so that we can have new contracts in place by October first. I will point out, um, on our rock material contract, uh, we're going to extend that contract for an additional year, uh, with Frost. The contract provides for that extension, and we'll be very satisfied with the materials, uh, that they're providing, and they're willing to hold the price consistent for another year. We're going to extend that one. And then on the contract hauling, uh, we've offered, uh, Matt Construction an extension for the contract for Stoneham. He's been doing a real good job. Uh, we are going to offer, uh, the contract for Iola out to bids again. And, you know, this year, we're going to, also, we're going to go out for tree trimming. The county has not gone out for a new contract on tree trimming for about three years, so we're going to go through and get a new contract on that also.
Bridge labor.
Bridge labor, we have a contract, we have not used it this year, but we have a contract that allows us to bring in, uh, a contractor on short notice on a fixed hourly rate to do emergency repairs and that kind of thing on bridges, a little bit's work that we can do ourselves. Typically, that's going to be if there's pile driving that needs to be done, since we don't have the equipment for that. Fortunately, we haven't had to use it this year, uh, but we'd like to have that available if a situation comes up, and we can be able to respond quickly.
Do we typically go out for contract mowing? I mean.
We do, yeah. We, we've rebid that every year.
That's for the south and north?
There are three areas, um, Johnson Ranch, uh, down on the south side, in the B-Dice area, that we have contracts for. What we have done on the contract mowing, certain areas of the county where we have roads with wider right-ofways, and they lend themselves, uh, more to the larger commercial equipment, uh, we've got three contracts on that. And they'll bring in, you know, fourteen, fifteen-foot mowers and do those. A lot of our roads are so narrow, uh, you can't use that kind of equipment on them, so we do those ourselves.
Have we done those this year?
Yes. We typically will do two, uh, and if the time and the funds allow, we'll do three mowers. We have, I think, one more round to go. Uh, it'll probably happen in mid-September.
We do need to take action on the agenda item number twelve. Is there a motion?
I move that we allow Rogan Bridge to go out for bids for fuel, culverts, tree trimming, contract mowing, asphalt emulsions, contract hauling, and bridge labor.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda number twelve by Commissioner Cox, a second by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Motion carries. Mr. Walker?
Crews are continuing with the chip sealing program. Uh, we completed the Carlton Ranch area this past week. Uh, we are going to do Camellia and Azalea tomorrow, uh, and then we'll be moving to some new areas, uh, that- We should, by the end of the month, have finished the first course on everything, and then we'll come back. Uh, the second course will go much faster, because all the prep work's already been done. Uh, but we will be rolling to September before the chip sealing program is complete. Uh, but it is moving along, and, and things are working really well. Uh, elsewhere-
I'm sorry, do you feel like we're pretty much, uh, empty our budget in that arena, that what we have budgeted this year?
Yes.
Okay.
They actually will, will probably do more than was originally budgeted. Uh, the list that I gave, uh, the court last year at budget time, covered more roads than was ultimately approved. Uh, but I think I have enough money that we can use our road materials to finish up everything that's on that list.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm trying to do that. Uh, elsewhere, uh, we restarted the herbicide spraying program, uh, recently. Uh, we, the county has not done that for the last several years, uh, but we're back in that business. So far, they've done the, the areas around, uh, Iola, B-Dice, and Keith, uh, but we will be continuing to do that, uh, in other parts of the county, particularly in the town areas. And a lot of the, there are certain locations, uh, a lot of the curves and things, we try to keep down the vegetation to, to make those locations safer. But, so restarted that. We've also, we've been working on, um, road work related to the Enterprise Pipeline Project. Uh, we've been able to do, address all of those roads, except for one fifty-six is still under construction. Uh, but everything else that they're gonna be using is being completed. And we should be finished with one fifty-six here, probably another week. So that's coming along, and the pipeline company is moving really quick, which is good. Uh, they'll get in and get out, uh, and be out of our air shortly.
Okay.
Glad to see that. Green is true, uh, Great Hall's been working in conjunction with the chip sealing. That's, they've been the primarily, primary activity here lately. The side ditcher is up to two hundred and sixty miles of ditch work this year, uh, he's doing really well. Elsewhere, uh, we've been working, uh, with Dave Lilly and the FEMA folks doing the verification of the damages for Hurricane Harvey. We're doing side inspections, they're measuring everything out, we've got, uh, a few more days of that work to do before it's completed. Any questions?
As Magellan said, you think about meeting with us on the roads that they're gonna use for the pipeline, their pipeline?
They have not, uh, when I talked to them yesterday, I did point out, they contacted us regarding their cover permits, and I reminded them that we also have to do a road use permit. I've sent those forms to them previously, so they have them, shouldn't be any surprise. Typically, what has happened with these projects, the owner waits until they have a contractor in place, and they'll have the contractor give the road use permit, because they could provide the bonding. I think Magellan has hired a contractor now, so they should be ready to do that in the near future.
Any other questions for Mr. Walker?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number thirteen, Grimes County Appraisal District, Mr. Mark Benneke. Number thirteen, rec- receive, review, and discuss chief appraisers' submissions of appraisal roll, effective tax rate, rollback tax rate, and other tax rate adoption materials. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge, and good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is Shannon Sanders, he's Deputy Chief Appraiser at the Appraisal District, and, uh, he's been working with the effective tax rate in, uh, in J C's office. So I'm gonna let him explain all this.
All right.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Uh, does everybody have my packet? Uh, a lot of material there, the main thing is the first two pages. That's the effective tax rate calculations and the rollback tax rate calculations. Uh, as you see there on the first page, the effective tax rate is point five zero eight six one seven, and the rollback tax rate is point five five two six one four. Understand, uh, the court's gonna come back on August twenty-second and propose a rate. This gives you some parameters before you propose that rate. I know it's a lot of stuff, but the second page there will kind of tell you what revenue you raise with each rate there. Column three would, uh, have the revenue if you raised, if you proposed the effective, proposed and adopt the effective rate. And column four would be the, uh, the revenue raised with the rollback rate. So you, you need to stay, you probably need to stay within those parameters there. Last year's rate does fall in between those two rates there, so, and that's also in column two there. Uh, the rest of this packet is just the calculations to arrive at those rates. That's pretty much all I have, unless y'all have any questions.
A portion of this does look like the new math they're teaching, but why don't I stay on pages one and two?
Yes, sir.
With the explanation you shared with me, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable. The auditors have seen this, have they not, multiple times, and y'all concur with what has been presented, at least to this point? Okay. Dare I ask Commissioners any questions? I will admit this is a process. We're not approving anything, this is just a time to review and discuss with the chief appraisers, uh, information at this time. Shannon, is there anything of interest that you would want to point out to us that we should take note of, or?
Uh, no, sir, um, the, the calculation worksheet is just, uh, it's kind of like TurboTax, it's just you plug in a number, and it eventually gets you down to the, the meat of it, which is the, pretty much the last page of that, that worksheet, where it, uh, calculates the effective and the rollback tax rate. Uh, most people see the rollback tax rate as pretty much a, a stop sign as far as the maximum and then-
And that's your column four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the, the effective tax rate is the rate that would raise about the same revenue if applied to the same properties from last year to this year.
And then our collection rate, we're still holding at the ninety-six percent of-
Yes, sir, that's a, that's a number that, uh, I believe y'all use for your budgeting purposes.
It was.
Pretty good number there.
And y'all actually do a little better than that at the end of the day?
I think so, yes.
Thank you both for being here today.
Yes, sir.
And the court has the option to give you a call if a question does come up in a later day.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir.
We'll go to agenda item number fourteen. County Judge Joe Fouth, consider and take action to establish the salary, expenses, and other allowances of elected county or precinct officers according to Local Government Code one five two point oh one and one five two point oh one three. We did have to, as required by Local Government Code, uh, post notices in the paper. We are in compliance with that, as the notices were posted last Wednesday. Uh, Sheree has provided for each of you a copy of that notice as it was in the paper last Wednesday. And in general, I guess in general discussion, in the proposed budget, there, I proposed a two percent increase across the board for all county employees, which includes the elected officials, what we're looking at and talking about at this time. The information that I received from the auditor's office twenty thirteen was the last time any type of across-the-board adjustment was made for the county, county employees. And based on the current economic situations, unemployment rates, and things of that sort, I've proposed a two percent. And included in that is the elected officials.
And Judge, I would like to comment that, um, the two district judges are at their maximum, and therefore, um, Tuck and Klein could not receive a pay increase.
Correct. It's not that they don't deserve one, maybe they're just-
Exactly.
They're redlined, as we would say.
Uh, I'd like to ask a question about, um, do you see us, uh, when will we discuss this proposed budget as a whole?
The budget as a whole on our calendar is the twenty-
The twentieth is the public hearing.
Twenty is the public hearing.
That's a public hearing, so. Are we allowed, uh, to discuss the proposed budget at that time?
At that time?
At the public hearing?
Um, has it, has it been published, or will it have been published by then?
The proposed budget is online on the website, and the notifications have, the appropriate notification has been applied to the paper. I'll read, uh, out of part of what we're supposed to go by, and it says, "Commissioner's Court must notify elected officers of proposed salaries and expenses after having received the proposed budget from the county judge." We posted the proposed budget online, we have given you the proposed budget increases or decreases, the proposed salaries and expenses, but sufficiently before the court's approval, so that the aggrieved officer can receive a determination from the Salary Grievance Committee. So what you have in front of you, what we posted in the paper, is the, uh, adjustments made to elected officials, giving all elected officials an opportunity to review and see if they feel like it is inadequate, then they have a process to go through where they can bring the grievance committee together. We have, according to the appropriate codes and rules, have put together a grievance committee of citizens of the county. They have been requested to participate, they have responded, and that was on the basis of Commissioner's Court action much earlier in this process, when we had the drawing from the grand jury, uh, individuals. I don't know exactly what the date of that meeting was, we could certainly go back to the minutes and find that information out. But everything has been in accordance with the timelines as to what we need to be, to be legal.
Is it possible to, I would like to request a budget workshop hearing. Uh, I know that next Wednesday, do you have another agenda item for the court pertaining to the budget, or is it the twentieth?
I don't think so, it's just the twentieth.
The twentieth is the day.
The day for?
What's, Sheree, what's the terminology on that, do you have that?
The twentieth is the proposed budget-
Here.
It's the adoption of the proposed budget.
No, the adoption is the twenty-second.
It's the twenty-second. The twentieth is the public hearing, and then the adoption is the twenty-second.
Yes, during regular Commissioner's Court. That's a Wednesday, the twenty-second is a Wednesday.
Well, in between here and there, I'd like to see if we could have a budget workshop?
Well, that's not gonna work for me, you can have a budget, we can schedule a budget workshop on the twentieth, after the public hearing.
That, that's the one.
Okay. We will get the wheels rolling on that. Is this facility going to be available?
I, I have to go and look.
All right.
We'll find some.
We'll find someplace, okay. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Okay. But I would hope that we don't have to spend a whole lot of time on the Commissioner's, since we've spent so much time as a Commissioner's Court on these previous days as we've worked the numbers. Because these numbers are not necessarily my numbers only, it's, it's a conclusion of what the court has put together thus far.
But it's been new numbers added.
There have been numbers added, and, well, to the salaries, yes, there has.
Salaries, and also, I think we had some additional, um, we, we, uh, I think I saw where licensing weights was added, I also saw-
That was, that was not added, that was never taken out of the original request. Yes, it's added to the budget, but we didn't-
We took everything out, it, when we had the workshop at the preliminary budget.
No, we did not.
And the preliminary, it wasn't in there.
It wasn't in there.
No, we did not. Yes, it was.
No, not until we received the addition, until we received the numbers from the tax appraiser. When we received his numbers, his certified numbers-
Right.
That was after the preliminary, and that was added in, after all of y'all's meetings and stuff.
Okay.
So that's where-
I stand corrected.
So I, I just think it would be, um, respectful of the Commissioner's Court to all have some input into the proposed budget.
That's fine.
Prior.
So we'll schedule a workshop on the twentieth to convene, uh, after our regular meeting, or that hearing?
And that, and that hearing is at the town hall, so, because this room is booked, I just checked, so I'll need to get with Mayor Sal, and make sure that it's still available after.
Okay. Which, who has it booked for the twen- this, the annex?
Magellan Pipeline.
Oh, that's right, we've had a discussion. All right. All right, well, if you'll check and make sure that the town hall is available. Okay. Back to agenda item number fourteen, it says, "Consider and take action to establish the salary, expenses, and other allowances for elected county or precinct officers according to Local Government Code one fifty-two point oh one and one fifty-two point oh one three." Any further discussion? Now, as, these increases, are they, what, what, how do they affect the budget as far as the, the proposed? Well, when we, once we got the certified numbers from the tax appraiser, the, the additional, I say the additional amount, once he certified the numbers, went back and put in some of those items that had been quest, requested by department heads, elected officials. And when that was said and done to a degree, the amount that we had remaining would allow us to apply a two percent across the board for all county employees. Well, it would be, I guess, given to department heads in order to-
Well, it would be, I guess, given to department heads in order to-
Sir?
It'll be given to department heads to do whatever they-
No. This is proposed as a cost of living adjustment. Right, and the reason, and that's a little bit contrary to what I've been preaching in the past, but since we haven't had any type of across-the-board adjustment for our employees for six years, with the economy doing better, we're going to, as a, as an employer, we're gonna be fighting to hold our employees. So, in my opinion thus far, it was in the best interest to apply a two percent across-the-board COLA adjustment for all employees. So there are no merit increases being proposed in the budget, with the exception of, there is a line item for the auditor's office, but that's not determined by this court, that's determined by the two district judges. I have advised the district judges, uh, through written correspondence, that we are applying a two percent across the board. And Judge Mckegg has said, he, and I've talked to Judge Kramer, both of them individually, uh, and emailed them together, and then they said they will have discussion and they'll advise us, based on their meeting on the twenty first, which would allow us to put their data in the budget before we present it on the twenty second. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm grasping for procedural correctness, and I'll ask the, our counsel and our auditor, this is proposed, so, the agenda item says, "Consider and take action to establish the salary ex, ex, comma, expenses, and other allowances of elected county and precinct officers according to the Local Government Code." So effectively, is that asking for approval of what's before the court at this time?
It is. We've crossed this bridge before when there have been grievances, if you wait to appoint the committee, you gotta do it within, no later than fifteen days of the date that a request or a grievance is filed. They've gotta hold their meeting within ten days. So it's twenty-five days. If you're pushing against the end of September, it becomes problematic if you wait until the adoption of the budget to first give the opportunity for folks to file a grievance. Of course, their grievance is no good if it's after the adoption of the budget. So you gotta find some way to stick this, I'm gonna call it this, goofball procedure in the middle of this thing, where you give elected officials an opportunity to request a hearing, have people show up to decide whether they're overpaid or underpaid, or paid the right amount. Effectively, today, this has been set up in the last couple of years, and it was as a result of, I mean, we found ourselves writing to the Attorney General, requesting an opinion on this issue, and asking, is it the truth that we have to have twenty-five days built into the middle of this thing before we can adopt the budget? And essentially, the AG said, yeah, it is what it is. And you've got to have twenty-five days, uh, maximum obviously, but twenty-five days worked in before the adoption can be made. So what, go back to, one of the primary functions of the county judge, especially now that we have a CCL, is to be the budget officer, to come up with the preliminary budget. However, it is not the county judge's duty to adopt the budget, it is all of you. So you now have the opportunity to review what he's proposed, but in the midst of that, you as a body are being asked to set these numbers early, before the rest of the budget is adopted. So yes, you, you got it right, it is what it is. It may feel a little weird just because it is weird.
Got a question.
Okay.
Okay, it says, uh, salary, expenses, and other allowances. So if they approve this today, then what's already proposed as expenses, they're approving that to be?
There, there, I think there's some confusion about that. My understanding is, my interpretation is, this deals with compensation. This is not dealing with all the items in your budget.
Office supplies, repairs, contracts.
It just can't be that.
I concur.
I don't think that's right.
But I don't have near the knowledge you do.
Well, we'll just, we'll just test it, how about that?
Okay. But it does, my understanding is strictly for compensation items, which would be our travel allowance and our salary.
Right.
With that being said, according to the timeline, if we have on the, what, twenty second to adopt the budget, and we're holding a workshop on the twentieth? I'm trying to get there.
Yeah, it's, believe me, it's confusing. You, you have to give elected official, you as a court, have to tell the elected officials what you plan to pay them. You gotta give the public an opportunity to squawk if you're giving a raise. That's been done in the paper now. But the ten and fifteen days for elected official to request, to first set up the committee, which has now been done, so we don't need that fifteen days. But the ten days in which to have the hearing has to be given after you notify them what amount you intend to set. That has to be done before the budget's adopted.
Right.
So that's where you are, if, if the meeting for adoption is on the twentieth, we barely got ten days before the twentieth.
So this is what we planned to pass?
Well, I thought you said twentieth was adoption, I'm sorry.
No, twenty seconds, the adoption.
Twenty seconds, well, you still barely have ten days.
But do we have time in that timeframe if we want to, uh, file a grievance? Isn't that too soon?
I don't know, we already got the committee established.
Mm-hmm, so once we receive, then we have five days to answer the court as to if the elected official or the precinct officer wants to file a grievance. Okay, then once that five days, uh, is up, then they have ten days, the grievance committee from there to meet, to hear the grievance.
Right.
So, the budget-
Which has to be done before the adoption of the budget.
Yes, so, that's a lo, that's a lot, that's more than the twenty second. The date of the twenty second is what I'm getting to.
You're saying fifteen and ten is what you're saying, right? Right.
Fifteen.
The adoption rate could be pushed back if that's what's needed.
It needs to be, from the sound of it.
Well, provide they get grievances.
Yeah, the grievance still has to be within five days of potentially today. If there are any, then there's no issue.
So if we, as a court, say, this is what we intend to do, clock starts ticking, they, an elected official then has five days to notify the court they're in disagreement and they're filing their grievance?
Correct, and the committee then has ten days. Now see, I guess the issue is, the committee has ten days maximum within which to set. Doesn't mean they can set it on one day, two days, three days. They don't have to wait ten days. That's the most they can wait.
We set it on the mon, afternoon of the twentieth.
Now, now, in the past, have we actually had this, um, item on the agenda to read like this?
I believe it's read like that, I, I was pointing out to Sheree that one five two point zero one probably should be zero one one, 'cause there is no zero one, but other than that, I believe so. It would have only been in the last couple of years. We ran into this problem, uh, with Judge Shiftlet, and that's when started seeing a number of grievances and realized, and that's, I think, the time that we requested the AG opinion, it's when we realized that we couldn't just keep this as part of the adoption process because we weren't factoring in, you point out the five day to make the request. There's also the ten days for the committee to meet. There's a fifteen day, essentially, time period for the court to assemble the committee after the request is made. Well, we've already assembled the committee, so we've cut that fifteen days out. But we weren't doing that before that.
Okay, okay, so, um, I thought we started receiving salary in a notice, like a letter. Are those letters gonna go out today?
Yes.
Once we approve, this is what we're going to submit.
So once, once the court receives, or the elected officials or precinct officers receive their letter today, they have five days in which to respond to whether they want to file a grievance, and then the start, clock starts ticking for the committee to meet. Okay.
Now, we have never given a raise since I've been in office to cross-the-board payments. This is the first time we've done this. But remember the first year that we got the grievances, we ran up to the wire in getting those done that, that year. And that's why we did the early, set the committee for the grievance hearings early, so we didn't have to do that. We had to do all of that, and that's why it put us into, right, right up to the end of September to get that done, the first time we did it.
Well, I guess what was really throwing me today is, um, actually, we had not, you know, spoken since the preliminary, and then this, this came out with the across-the-board cost of living adjustment in it. And then, um, the wording was throwing me as to, if we were approving, if we were to approve the expenses and other allowances was throwing me.
Right, it's just, just assume that it's basically compensation.
Compensation expense.
And now that you've given the world notice that there's a possibility you may add two percent, you can go as high as that, and you can go over that because you hadn't told the world anything else about it. Or you can go down to what the number used to be, uh, last year. And then you gotta give opportunity to, um, folks to file a grievance, uh, request, or grievance committee request.
So do we need to word that to say compensation, or we have to word it to say exactly what it says?
Well, it's written the way that the code is written, and I'll tell you, one fifty-one point zero one one says, "Commissioner's Court shall set the amount of the compensation, office and travel expenses, and all other allowances for county and precinct officers who are paid wholly from county funds." All right, so you gotta set that amount. Then today is essentially for what are we setting today? Each year, the court shall set the salary, expenses, and other allowances of elected, uh, county or precinct officers. That's the term, so, those are the terms, salary, expenses, and other allowances. It doesn't really matter to me how you choose to word it, to be honest, we know what, what's intended.
Okay, I didn't, uh, you know, sometimes what's written is what's written.
The whole reason here is to, of, of this whole process is to give elected officials an opportunity to say, you ain't paying me enough.
Or I didn't ask for that.
Well, they may say that. Seldom do you hear that in the halls of the county offices.
Based on what's before us, I make a motion to consider and take action to establish the salary expense and other allowances of elected county or precinct officers according to Local Government Code one five two point oh one one and one five two point oh one three.
And set them in accordance with the schedule that was published, is that your motion, George?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there a second? A second motion. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number fourteen by County Judge Joe Fowth, seconded by County Commissioner David Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number fifteen, "Consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize a county judge's signatory." I would propose we leave it in for another week, I know we've had a few showers here and there, but we also had a big fire this weekend. It's kind of testament to the decision we made a couple of weeks ago, it was the right decision. Is there any, commissioners, is there anything contrary to that thought?
We've got a lot of areas that have not received any ruling, and some that have received, received a lot of it, but still.
So we'll consider and take no action? Yes?
One, one point I wanna raise on this, and John, you may be able to answer this. Is there something about, now that it's been in place for two weeks, isn't there something to where they have to make some kind of additional ruling or something to extend it beyond two weeks? Or it doesn't, can they just simply keep it in place?
Uh, my recollection is it's valid for ninety days.
Ninety days, okay.
I understand. Thank you for asking though, Mr. Lillard.
And also, all of our neighboring counties still have burn bans.
So we'll take no action? Is that agreed? Item number sixteen, "Receive any updates to the strategic plan." Commissioner Malin, have you done anything with PGL as far as?
PGL is supposed to give me some more information, then we'll set up a meeting with, with Commissioner's Court and with the, uh, rebuilding committee.
Okay. And do you have a suggested timeline or idea?
I should be getting that any, any time now, so I would hope within the next couple of weeks we have that scheduled.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else on this strategic plan? Agenda item number seventeen, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion before the court from Commissioner Malin, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. To adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?